If any item does not appear to be contentious, members... No? Thank you colleagues. The first item of business is declaration of interest. No declarations of interest have been received. Does anyone now wish to verbally make any declaration before we move on to the next item of business? councillor Hamilton?
I don't think this will impact on the agenda at all, but as of yesterday I was made a member of the board of S- uh, C change. I haven't had time to submit the forms, but I wanted to make it clear that my position had changed with regards to that and I will get the su- the form submitted tomorrow.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Councillor Malcolm?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Declare a pretty resolute rest as a director and chair of South Tyneside.
Thanks Chair. Chair, I would like to declare an interest as a chair adult and children's safeguard on item five and six on the agenda. And I would also like to declare an interest as the director on the board of South Tyne Side Home in respect of item six. This is a personal interest and more need not the discourse of peculiar interest therefore I am here to stay in this meeting with the council.
Councillor Hamilton?
Yes, um, I'd just like to look at the appendi- uh, uh, sorry, annex one. Uh, just a matter of accuracy there where it says question from Hamilton. I'm assuming it should say either councillor Hamilton or Angela Hamilton. I'd be grateful if that could be amended, thank you.
I'm sure councillor Hamilton, that's just a clever... And advice in supporting the Armed Forces Community Forum in South Tyneside. Bringing the views and priorities of their local area to work in this council. With nearly a hundred and forty years service collectively. Thanks go to the following councillors. Councillor Brady. Councillor Boyack. Councillor Dick. Councillor Nancy Maxwell. Councillor Olive Punction. Councillor Sewell. And councillor West. I hope that all members will join me in thanking them and wishing them well for a long and healthy, happy retirement. Business is to consider report as the chief executive and head of paid service to men- the membership of committees of the council. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, the council's chief executive and monogging officer were advised last month of a number of changes to member affiliation and recognised political groups of the council. As a result, the council is legally required to recalculate political proportionality to ensure that the committees that are subject to political balance are correctly constituted. Colleagues, the report explains the impact of these changes, particularly in the table paragraph eleven. Madam Mayor, I move the report and would ask colleagues to agree the recommendations set out in paragraph eighteen and nineteen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Councillor Walsh? Seconded. Are there any questions? Or does any member wish to speak to the report? The report is agreed. Thanks. The next item of business is to consider report of the director of governance and corporate affairs to seek approval of the community priorities do- delivery report twenty twenty two. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In March twenty twenty one, South Tyneside Council articulated five community priorities to provide a focus for activity and investment over the last year. These priorities are of course into in addition to the day-to-day work we all undertake to ensure South Tyneside is a great place to live, invest and bring up families. I'm sure we will all agree that the last twelve months has been difficult for our residents and for our businesses. The impact of climate change are unfortunately very brutal with incidents such as the recent destructive storms seen in South Tyneside and other parts of the country. The social inequalities prevent presented by the COVID nineteen pandemic continue as we enter a new financial year with growing pressures on our services for those most in need. That's why we must continue delivering on these top priorities. The presented delivery port highlights some of the council's work within each priority area over the last year. Work to support our young people in need, work to support our families and older and our vulnerable residents. What we are doing to invest on that in our natural and built environment and creating the conditions for economic recovery and investment as well as supporting our town centres, villagers, retail and hospitality sectors. The report is not intended to provide a comprehensive picture of all council activities over the last twelve months. However, I do hope members will agree that it provides an overview of key areas of activity which we will continue to build upon as we plan for our new financial year. This report is presented to council for contact contacts and information alongside the draft medium term financial plan. It highlights activities in those areas identified as a current priority based on our local insights. Colleagues, this report prevents all members, residents and other stakeholders with information about the performance of South Tyneside council against its five against its five community priorities, which I ask all elected members to note. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Councillor Best? Thank you councillor Best. Are there any questions? Or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you. Um, Madam Mayor, I'd request that I can remain seated if that's okay?
That's fine.
Thank you, just for access reasons. Um, just a few questions on the report actually, if that's okay. Um, I'm gonna start with the report itself, which is paragraph seven. Um, I'd be interested in to know what other consultation activity we undertook apart from, um, basically sending it out in a a newsletter that applying, so I'd be interested in seeing that. Um, in paragraph eight, we talk about engagement. I'd like to know what kind of engagement we'll be carrying out. And in paragraph twelve, where we've talked about accessible, making the the report accessible on the on the website, I'd like to know how we're going to manage that. I've been through a number of the council's reports today and quite a lot a lot of them aren't accessible for people who use screen readers. So going forward, I'd like to ensure that every document that we have is properly tagged so that they can be read by screen readers. Then just want have a few comments on the the report itself, which I think is a very good and comprehensive report. Um, but there are a couple of things in it that I think we may need to to consider. Um, so for example, you referred to the JSNA and I looked at the JSNA today. Um. One of the statements in it said the number of households claiming income support in the borough has decreased by twenty percent within the last two years, which has decreased more dramatically within Beaton and Bentons and Harton Keywards. I thought that was a little surprising until I scrolled down to the bottom of the page and found out that it hadn't been updated since two thousand and eighteen. So it is quite out of date, the information that we're using in the D- JSNA. Um, the last public health report was two thousand and nineteen and the last information on children, young people's mental health and emotional wellbeing and children in need of help and protection was actually June two thousand and seventeen. Now, I'm sure that these reports and these things have been produced, but they're not actually available and we need to make sure that the JS- JSNA is brought up to date, uh, as soon as possible because I wouldn't like to think that people were relying on information that is out of date. Um. And then just wanted to to raise a couple of concerns about some of the things in the report and ask a couple of questions, if that's all right. Um, on page six of the actual report. Um, it talks about, where am I? No, sorry, page. Yeah, so I am on page six. Add-on combination schemes. I wondered if it would be possible to get a bit more information about what those schemes will be and what they're intended to be, where we what the schemes will be, what the types of schemes are. Um. And again, on page seven, where we've talked about being one of the best areas for in the country for health checks, I'm I'm absolutely sure that we are, but I think we didn't. We shouldn't include something that says why we could we're entitled to say that rather than just saying it. So maybe a reference to where where that's the what the rating is, I think would be helpful. It'd also be useful to know whether, like in South Court, it's actually eight or nine bedrooms because it says eight stroke nine, um, which I'm not quite sure how that works. On page eight, it refers to the skills commissioner recommendations. I'd like to know what those recommendations are. Um, and I'm also interested in where the eighteen secondary schools are. I've done my best to find eighteen secondary schools, but there's only fourteen that I can find and that includes a college and special educational needs schools. So I don't know whether that's a typo in the report that may need looking at and correcting. Okay, I'm gonna get on the town centres now, which is the bit that is obviously more concerned, sorry.
Did you rule eight point eleven? All of these questions should have been submitted in writing and given prior notice. So really...
That's not what it says in the constitution. That's only if it's questions not on something on the agenda. All our questions can be accepted on the proper agenda.
Yes, we're asking an awful lot of questions councillor Hamilton, to be answered at this meeting.
They don't have to be answered. I I was expecting the same response that I always get, that it will be in writing. Um, but the report, the the constitution doesn't say that if it's on the agenda, it doesn't say there's a limit on how many questions you can ask.
Can you just told them that if one's so desperate, I'll take some of your advice? Okay, councillor Hamilton, you may continue.
Thank you. Um, with regards to, um, the town centre, I'd like to know how many businesses the business and community support officers have actually spoken to or communicated with or engaged with. I've spoken to several businesses over the last week and none of them have had any contact from these business and community support officers. I'd like a bit more information about the going out in South Tyneside campaign because I can't find anybody who knows anything about that. So a bit of information about that would be helpful. Um, and then the the six million pound Future High Streets Fund, which is around the eight hundred and eighty-four homes in walking distance of South Shrewsbury Town Centre. Um, I have raised concerns before about the way they will be built and I'd like to know if any decision has been made as yet as to where those will be built because it could impact on some of the businesses, particularly the hospitality businesses in town. Um, so did you decide where they will be built?
So, did you decide where they will be built? Future High Streets Fund, which is around the eight hundred and eighty-four homes in walking distance of South Shrewsbury Town Centre.
Thank you. Um.
I will come back, obviously, because there is a number of questions. I mean, we are listening, councillor, and we all think it's just about residential residents. Um, and that, that when I feel that the issue has happened, I will start the tour of businesses and everything. I think it's really important that businesses are able to back home and go again. You know, I'm gonna let you, I think, that I'm pretty glad to have you. But I'm sure you're not interested in taking the backside as well to the street or to the local council. Yeah, maybe absolutely, just take away all the camps and stuff, I just own it.
Absolutely. Exactly. Is the main opposition. Councillor George, he said to my sister, he said, you need to remember that it's every power in the future. And you will pause his amendment after councillor Dixon spoke. His amendment was rescinded. He said that he's seen the amount of freedom on his hands to see later and debate. And will then have debate on the amendment and there will be an opportunity for us to ask questions or speak on the amendment for ordinary minutes. Councillor George, as the woman of the amendment has the right to reply at the end of debate on the amendment before the new amendment is put to the vote. Councillor Bell, as the woman of the original motion has the right to reply at the end of debate on the original motion before it is put to the vote. As is custom. One of the most important things the council has to achieve is to set its budget. We must do this to comply with the law and ensure good governance, but also set out strategically how our plans for the coming years will be resolved. Yet again, there's been no alternative budget put forward by the opposition, just a small amendment to our proposals. Twenty twenty one has been another remarkable year, but unfortunately not always in a positive way. Who would have thought that in March twenty twenty, we would still be talking about COVID nineteen? We are supposedly recovering from COVID, but there is still significant uncertainty as it isn't over and we will still be impacted by future variants. It's brought greater harm to daily living and at its worst cause great anguish due to the loss of loved ones. I pay tribute to our magnificent NHS and social panister and how they worked and are continuing to work through this period. There still seems to be a way to go and we must continue to do everything we can to protect ourselves. As a council and a borough, we responded. We were there to support residents and businesses through hardship and crisis as we do all here around them, while still providing the vital services that you and our residents rely on. We must continue to build on the lessons we learnt and the experiences we encountered so that when we want to get things done and achieved together, we can as a borough. For all of those who have supported their communities during the pandemics are not the same age and the key. For all of those who have supported their communities during the pandemics are not the same huge and key. The government would claim austerity is over. However, the huge reductions in funding are still with us and have been since twenty ten. They have not gone away, and our finances continue to be squeezed. Since austerity began twelve years ago, this council has had to find savings of a hundred and eighty three million pounds. We will continue to manage our resources strictly, so that we remain financially sustainable over the long term. We cannot do this alone, and we will continue to work with partners locally, regionally and nationally to secure resources and influence. We have seen high levels of government borrowing to support the economy during the pandemic, which will not be sustainable over the long term. The government's comprehensive spending review last autumn prioritised increases in funding over the next three years to the NHS, which will have some benefits to social care, but local government is not one of the so-called winners from this additional spending. Surprising? Not at all when you look at the record of investment in local government. Don't get me wrong, there are opportunities to explore and increase resources and flexibilities through new reach arrangements for the levying of white paper. Opportunities due to COVID, such as a shift to new flexible ways of working, which increase productivity, support carbon reduction, enhance collaborative working and have a positive influence on well-being. We have a focus on community priorities as we heard earlier, and developments through a strategic plan collaborating with partners and the public on a longer-term set of high and disciplined boroughs, on which we can target our resources and share across the organisation the common sense of values on how we do things in this council. We also learn from others through external reviews such as our corporate peer challenge and embracing the opportunities they present. We again only received a one-year settlement in England, which inhibits longer-term planning. Inflation is at its highest level for ten years and is continuing to rise. This pushes up the cost of providing services and investment in our longer-term projects. Energy costs are set to increase by fifty percent. This will add millions to the cost of our revenue budget each year, especially in the area of social care, where demand pressures across both adult and social and children's social care make up a significant proportion of our revenue budget. Although funding reforms were announced by the government last year in adding social care, the cost of the council providing that here will ring up significantly. And there are major doubts as to whether the additional government funding to be provided as compensation will be significant enough. Over seventy percent of our discretionary revenue budget is spent on adult and children's social care. We are still waiting for the fair review from government, which is expected to change the distributions of grant support across individual councils. There is, however, potential for the council to lose significant sums from this review. We must always ensure that our spending plans are aligned with our priorities and achievement of key objectives. Through consultation, the public has repeated its message to us that we need to encourage more and better jobs in the borough and private investment. The economic challenges which we face are deputed and have been made all harder by the pandemic. However, we will continue to invest through this medium-term financial plan and key regeneration projects to increase prosperity of the borough and for our residents. The overall programme is to almost three hundred and fifty million pounds over the next five years. Continue with an ambitious capital programme funded through a range of means. Major employment schemes are progressing the day on, with the announcement of the new Digo Factory to manufacture batteries. The remediation of the home roof site to enable mixed residential and commercial development and further developing South Shire's town centre, building upon the new job centre facility as the area continues to be reshaped and moving continuously. We plan to continue improvements to highways and footpaths by investing over twenty five million pounds in the next five years, recognising the importance of this infrastructure to the neighbourhood. Approvements are also planned to come in stages to bring premium customer offer and complement the investment made to other leisure facilities in recent years. We are also increasing our investment for children with special educational needs and looking to improve accommodation needs for adults with complex needs. We will continue our commitment to a sustainable borough by further investment in major innovative energy schemes such as a home room, a channel and a tent. We have had to reduce our staffing numbers by thirty five percent over the last twelve years as government funding limited. If we hadn't taken these difficult decisions to live within our needs, we would, as some of the authorities in the public have, face government intervention or even in the case of no help and she'll can't be cancelled, abolition. Decision-making must be kept open and close to the people. However, this has meant that our capacity for further transformation and appropriate pace has been historically limited. But we are planning for a change in pace. Investment funding can expand our digital capability in delivery, project management and organisation development. Further investment will also be made to social care services, school improvement and access. We are already moving towards our three-year target and reducing urban emissions as part of the board of emergency council, which will be part of the actual plan twenty thirty. We have restored a strong network with our backdoor technology, which already distributed fifteen million pounds in money to businesses during the pandemic and establishes a transparent matrix to help people relax and raise their key organisations, such as E P.
So.
We will maintain our position of having the third lowest council tax in the region out of twelve authorities. We will extend our council tax relief scheme, as I've already mentioned, to provide an extra one hundred pound reduction to all working age residents and receipt of council tax support. In order to maintain our incredibly successful record of investment in the borough and as council tax now makes up more than fifty percent of our revenue income due to significant historical falls in government grant, an increase in council tax is proposed for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. It is proposed to increase core council tax by one point nine five percent, significantly below the prevailing level of inflation, which at the time of writing was five point four percent, but is rising sharply. In addition, a further one percent will be applied through the government's adult social care levy. The overall two point nine five percent is separate from the council tax increases proposed by the fire and police authorities for the services which they provide and which are independent of the council. I therefore commend the budget, the medium-term financial plan and associated recommendations in paragraphs twenty four to thirty one to council for approval. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. I've just been informed by my legal adviser that there is problems online with the sound and members of the public are not able to hear what's going on. Can I just say that we are open and transparent in everything that we say? And hopefully they'll be able to watch it online first thing in the morning when we get the sound adjusted. So it's just to make members aware of that, all members, okay? I mean, I know it's working, but it's very, very low, the sound, so people aren't able to hear what has been said in the chamber this evening. Sorry about that, councillor Bell. Is that report seconded, councillor Huntley?
Thanks, Madam May. Yes, I'd like to second the report and reserve the right to speak at the end of the debate. Thank you.
Now we move to the debate on the main motion. The leader of the main motion, opposition group councillor Thompson, is entitled to speak for a period up to fifteen minutes in the reply. Councillor Thompson, do you wish to reply to the main motion and move your amendment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, try and get this microphone in the right place. People can hear. So thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Bell for presenting the budget recommendations. Of course, the Labour Group propose, eh, of course, the Labour Group budget proposed today is not all bad. But some of it is. And it's the role of the opposition to hire that, and I will. In the midst midst of a cost of living crisis, the Labour Group's response is to add further pain to our residents with yet another hike in council tax. What options we may have had to avoid this rise if this Labour Group had managed our finances more prudently over the years, rather than attaining a debt level of around eight hundred million pounds. And before anyone blames the current government for everything, which is the usual, we need to look back to when we had a Labour government and you will find that a significant amount of this eight hundred million debt was accrued at that time. More worrying for the opposition working on this year's budget is that we have Northumbria Police currently investigating possible financial irregularities within our council. It's been said by the opposition before, and I'll say it again, how can the opposition set out a full budget in these circumstances? And how does this budget address the blight of our borough with antisocial behaviour? When I look at our response to this, I do see some good work. Clewell and Hartleyburn Community Hub and its initiative for young people is to be applauded. I hope initiatives like this can become available borough-wide. And also our emphasis on improving lighting in all of our green spaces is a welcomed initiative. But in relation to low-level ESP, like littering, dog fowling, rowdy, unre- unruly behaviour, rowdy or nuisance neighbors, uncontrolled animals, street drinking, nuisance noise, cycling on pavements, begging, not seeing enough from us, not seeing investment as a council, not nearly enough. These issues, which I was shocked to hear the Labour Group downplay recently in this chamber, are summed up in the words of your own Labour Shadow Minister Nicholas Thomas Simmonds recently, when he said, "We have an epidemic of antisocial behaviour cur- currently blighting communities across this country." This is coming from your own Labour Party. But where are the Labour Groups seriously addressing it here in South Tyneside? Where's the investment from the budgement, budget to get boots on the ground? They aren't, and they should be. We need to invest in the quality of life and the safety of our resi- residents by re-establishing the community warden scheme. And not just because it's the right thing to do, but because we have a legal and moral responsibility to do this. Crime and Disorder Act legislation reads, "It shall be the duty of each local authority to exercise its various functions with due regard to the likely effect and the need to do all that it reasonably can to prevent crime and disorder in its area, including antisocial and other behaviour adversely affecting the local environment." I don't believe we are fully aligned with this legislation, and that's unacceptable. Simply put, the Labour Group understating the often life-destroying effects and magnitude of ESP is not helpful. Madam May, I would like to now move an opposition group amendment to the budget and present it now.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. You may continue for up to three minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. The opposition amendment today is to establish a South Tyneside Rapid Response Community Warden Scheme. And it's costed for three community wardens, two vehicles, appropriate body cam equipment and computers. South Tyneside has significant issues around littering, dog fowling, and in particular, low-level ESP. In South Tyneside, we currently have almost no enforcement in place to deter littering, dog fowling and ESP. In South Tyneside, despite significant issues around littering, dog fowling and low-level ESP, we are averaging enforcement fines each year of only public spaces protection orders, fifteen. Those those fifteen were particularly related to one issue, dog fowling, two fines a year. Littering, one fine a year. In South Tyneside, we currently do not have a community warden service, which leaves our council having limited ability to enforce signs for prevalent offences related to littering, dog fowling and ESP. In South Tyneside, our council incurs significant costs related to services addressing littering, dog fowling and ESP. The establishment of a community warden service, which will be power-funded by enforcement revenues and in addition, will bring significant savings to our services. As a council in South Tyneside, we are currently active with our green agenda, both reducing our carbon emissions and improving the environment. What better green policy is there than improving our littering and fowling issues on the streets of the borough by establishing a community warden service that can directly address the problems and create a deterrent? Only recently in council, we passed the Motion of the Ocean. What better way of bolstering that green policy than directly addressing the huge littering problem we have in South Tyneside? As a coastal borough, our littering problems have clear and damaging implications that direct directly and negatively impact the ocean. As a council in South Tyneside, we need as a priority to ensure the public see that we are alert, proactive and considerate to general public safety and quality of life. Presently, with not having a community warden service in the borough, we are falling short of this priority responsibility. As a council in South Tyneside, we have a fantastic and significant relationship with volunteers and the third sector. Currently, in relation to littering and fowling issues in our green spaces and our seafront, we are heavily reliant on that third sector. We need to lead by example on the approach to these issues by establishing a community warden service in the borough, creating a visible deterrent, challenging offenders and making them accountable. As a council, we have financial resources available through the borough to benefit our neighbourhoods, our communities and our local volun- volunteers via the Community Area Forum and the Local Neighbourhood Scheme. Currently, in the last year's spend on the local neighbourhood scheme, well over eighty-eight thousand has been spent on various schemes, including solar panels, flagster flexible, road servicing and lay-by works. This is not what the lo- local neighbourhood scheme funding is designed for. And reallocating funds from that scheme in the year twenty-two, twenty-three for the establishment of a rapid response community warden scheme would be a significant factor in benefiting directly those neighbourhoods and communities in the manner the local neighbourhood scheme is expected to. The amendment proposes diverting in year one only one hundred and ten thousand from the local neighbourhood scheme for the establishment of a rapid response community warden scheme. Year two onwards is forecast to only require a reallocation of financing from the local neighbourhood scheme funding of between thirty-five and forty-five thousand, as enforcement revenue will subsidise future operating costs. The proposal would establish a part self-funded community warden scheme that would create an immediate deterrent to antisocial behaviour, an immediate reassurance to the people of the borough and an immediate capability of holding offenders to account. Deterrent, reassurance, accountability. We have none of this currently. The people of South Tyneside deserve better. For the future, we can develop this service, build bridges with Nor- Northumbria Police and other stakeholder organisations and protect our residents.
Councillor Thompson, I've let you go over you three minutes. I've let you half gone a half minutes already.
I'll wind up, sorry. Last sentence, last paragraph. Last sentence, last paragraph, none of us want to have to use enforcement. But none of us can deny these years at hand. Not holding people accountable for this is irresponsible, and I hope all members today can support this amendment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Is the amendment to the budget seconded? Thank you very much. Do any members wish to ask questions or speak on the amendment? Right, I'm going to speak now.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't know how this sounds going at the moment, but. Here we are again discussing the benefits or otherwise of what I think was a very important service to help maintain resident safety and the only real deterrent within our control to combat A S B. Let's remind ourselves again what antisocial behaviour is and how it sometimes manifests itself.
Can I just stop you saying, councillor Thompson, can you switch your microphone off?
Sorry?
It's alright, it's not your fault. It's just because it gives feedback and it's difficult.
Let us remind ourselves again what antisocial antisocial behaviour is and how it sometimes manifests itself in the th- in the three main groups. Personal A S B, uh, when a person targets a specific individual or group, like neighbour disputes, bullying and harassment. Nuance A S B, when a person causes trouble, annoyance or suffering to a community. Examples of abusive behaviour resulting from excessive alcohol intake, noise, rubbish, left strewn around gardens, et cetera, inconsiderate parking, inappropriate language, good examples. Environmental, when a person's actions affect the wider environment, such as public spaces or buildings, like graffiti, dog fowling, littering, illegal motorcycles, fly tipping, abusive retailing, local transport staff, et cetera, et cetera. These are the issues that we all recognise but don't seem to be able to deal with effectively, hoping on hope that the police will sort it out. In the short term, I think it's unlikely that the police service with its cut resource will fix this problem as they simply don't attend low level crime or A S B incidents. We in this chamber have a responsibility to do all within reason to keep our residents safe. Here's a proposal in taking the first steps to get at the root cause of who, and more importantly, why we in South Tyneside find ourselves in this position. The very mega services proposed here, but I believe it's something that can be built on for the future. Uh, in twenty nineteen, this service was removed for reasons that I'm sure made sense to someone at that point in time. Sorry, but we here are now suffering somewhat from the impact of that decision. We have seen the recent trailer devastation only last week in Beacon and Bent, which wouldn't look out of place in the Wild West movie. Although this decision was taken before my time in office, I have since heard elected members comment that the service at that point in time had become unfit for purpose and the wardens were laughed at by perpetrators and bystanders. So who do you think is responsible for that? Why was it allowed to become ineffective? Someone must have been accountable for the demise and the performance of this service. On Tuesday the fourteenth of May twenty thirteen, we're going back a long time here, but I just thought it was worthwhile mentioning. Reported on South Tyneside council website news councillor Dixon said the community wardens play a very important role in keeping the residents of the borough safe. And I would like to thank them personally for their contribution to make South Tyneside an outstanding place to live, invest and bring up families, unquote. I know that was quite a while ago and I'm not having a go at that statement, but clearly at that point, elected members deemed that service to be with making a worthwhile valued contribution to maintaining the safety of our residents. What went wrong? How did the service become unfit for purpose? By who and how is the warden's performance monitored? We must be able to find answers to all these questions to enable us to move forward to curtail this cancerous poison spreading on our streets. This amendment points out the previous lack of enforcement fines at an average of eighteen per year during the last three years of service, which included only one little fine issued per year. I'm not sure as to which committee the performance the performance report was referred, but this does not feel like value for me or effective performance to me. I'm not implying that we should be looking to find everyone seem to be breaking the rules. However, sh- fining should be given due consideration to habitual offenders and those whose acts heavily burden the taxpayer to repay any damage incurred. It seems to work with parking violations, so no reason why it can't have a similar effect on A S B if managed correctly. The warden service could provide vital body cam video evidence, which we seem to rely heavily upon in these days in bringing these cases to court. So for me, at the risk of repeating myself, it's a first step to providing some level of deterrent at A S B. Please don't wait until it's too late to do anything about it, as last week's events indicate that it may soon be to arrive on your doorstep. Do the right thing to help protect your residents, the same residents that elected you to help keep them safe. I urge you to vote for this amendment tonight and reinstate this community warden service in the best interests of the people who trusted you with their vote.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you councillor Melbourne. Does any member wish to speak or ask questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to speak to the report.
Go ahead councillor Gibson.
Madam Mayor, as I have previously updated council on a number of occasions over the past twelve months about tackling antisocial behaviour. It is a key priority, not only for the council, but the wider community with the safety, safety community partnership board. The pri- priority is embedded within our community safety partnership plan and approved by council in July of last year. Over the past ten year, this council has been hit hard due to austerity measures by successive Tory government. And we have faced significant financial challenges and budget cuts, hundred and eighty-three million over that period of the past ten years. The community warden service, which this proposal seeks to fund, was withdrawn as part not only of savings requirement, but due to become less effective. The issue highlights in this amendment a matter that we recommend and commit in tackle. However, we cannot do this in isolation. This is why we adopted a partnership approach. A governance structured community safety partnership helps deliver this with the issues such as considering and tasking and tasking meetings every fortnight. The pool of intelligence identifying areas and premises in individuals allows resource and access to partnership deploy the right kind of action. Enforcement is often seen as the only tool to deal with issues rightly and the right place. Our environment enforcement team over the past twelve months have issued a number of fixed penalty notices, prosecution a number of individuals and seized vehicles in criminal activities relating to fly tipping and littering. However, we need to consider and develop our preventive approach to ensuring education awareness is key element in tackling these issues. And I would like to encourage us to use see it, report it campaign as when we've asked the police for data, they turn around and they say, well, there's no data, nobody's rang in, so we don't know if it's a hotspot. So the main priority is phone in either one or one-one-one or the nine-nine-nine, and that is one of the best things to do. I cannot support this proposal to redirect CAF funding towards at least the amount wouldn't provide a very little resources. However, I would welcome the general principle in the investment in this area of work to continue with officers and partners, including the police, the police crime commissioner, to look at the best options and seek investment opportunities to ha- enhance our community and outline this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Hamilton, you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you. As one of the councillors for Beacon and Bent Ward, where all of the antisocial behaviour um happened last week, and I'm sure most of you in this chamber are aware of what happened. I have to say, I don't think community wardens would have stopped it. It was criminal damage. It was horrific. Um, phone boxes were broken, windows were broken. Staff in shops were threatened with having hand sanitizer squirted in their eyes. There was glass the length and breadth of King Street and Ocean Road. Cash machines were broken. I spent a considerable amount of time last week talking to the businesses who've been involved. And today I posted a couple of suggestions of what could be done um on social media, just to see what the public thought. One around diversionary activities and one around um restorative justice. So no, I don't think a community warden service would have stopped the antisocial behaviour that happened last week. That said, the antisocial behaviour that happened last week was not the beginning, it was the end. It was the culmination of things that I have been raising concerns about, not for weeks, not for months, but since even before I was elected as a councillor. And it has got significantly worse over the recent months. Things that used to be dealt with by community wardens, and before anybody says antisocial behaviour is not the council's responsibility, the council does have a responsibility for antisocial behaviour. Not the whole responsibility, but it does have responsibility for antisocial behaviour. And things that were previously dealt with by community wardens haven't been dealt with for quite some time. Three community wardens is not going to solve the problem. It really genuinely isn't. And my ward already lost twenty thousand pounds from its CAF funding budget last year. But I haven't seen an alternative proposal. And without an alternative proposal, this is a start. It's a move in the right direction. It's something that residents are asking for. Every single day in my ward, residents are asking for this. And I know you're gonna say, we don't know where would we put three people? Well, three people's not enough. Well then, find money for more people. We need to do something and we need to do something now. Tomorrow I will be la- launching my own consultation for my ward because I can't wait for the council to do it. To find out what people in my ward think we should be doing about antisocial behaviour. Cause next week, next month and next year is far too late. So I will be launching that consultation myself tomorrow. And this is something that's already been asked for, so I will be supporting this amendment. I know people won't think it's gonna do much. It isn't going to do much. I'm honest, it isn't going to do much. But it's better than nothing and something is always better than nothing. And I think we need to start now because I cannot spend another week or another few weeks speaking to residents and businesses who have had to suffer the way they did last week. Speaking to people on the metros who've been abused and shouted at and screamed at and in the metro interchange. The fact that we've had to have a metal detector put on the metro interchange to make sure there's nobody with knives. The fact that bar owners are saying they are scared to walk in King Street and walk in our town centre. We've gotta do something. This might not be anywhere near enough, but it's a start. So please support the amendment.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Does any of them in the wish to speak before I bring councillor Francis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'll try and be quick. Um, I'd echo a lot of what councillor Hamilton's just said there and I I would agree with her um almost entirely. I think if we compare this local authority to other local authorities, we know they have community wardens type services and it seems to work well for them, um, and it seems to be an effective deterrent. But also, uh, it helps, you know, hold responsible people that are doing things that they oughtn't to be doing. Uh, I've mentioned before in this chamber that there are people that live in my ward but who've worked doing that exact job elsewhere and they see firsthand how effective it is. We've heard it said that the previous system uh of community wardens was not fit for purpose and that that's part of why it was removed. But many residents, I think, would question if the current system is fit for purpose. And, you know, I I accept what councillor Gibson said about the investment that's that's been made in there and the current community partnership approach. But I think if you talk to the residents, some of them would question if that's really as effective um as it could be. I was concerned when I first heard about this amendment, I must admit, in terms of the loss of money from from the CAF. And obviously, we've we've heard, as as councillor Hamilton mentioned, that um that Beacon and Bent Ward lost out this year in terms of its CAF allocation. So I'm concerned that, you know, potentially we we could lose further uh from from dipping into the CAF funds to to fund this. Um, and I do have some concerns about creating a system where people feel that they need to impose fines in order to sustain their own jobs. And I I would I would keen to be keen to make sure that some systems put in place that avoids that situation. And, you know, we know that in in Covid nineteen, uh, you know, the early days of Covid nineteen, we heard about the four E's. Engage, explain, encourage and enforce, where enforce is the end of that process. And so I would hope that that would that would be the case if this is approved tonight. Um, so yeah, I I had some concerns about the proposed source of the funding and some concerns about the knock-on effects. But I also recognise that the local neighbourhood in Be- Beacon and Bent Ward in particular desperately needs some kind of intervention. And an intervention like this is a positive start to protect and reassure our residents.
Thank you councillor Francis. I've got three other councillors that wish to speak. Councillor Ba- sorry, four. Councillor Barclay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Speaking uh to the report. I think it's important that we highlight the way that we actually tackle antisocial behaviour. It's an ex- excellent example of multi-agency working as it is not usually a problem that can be solved by a single agency or service. In South Tyneside, we have an active and well-attended community safety partnership and governance process with a problem-solving task group and tactical meetings, setting up the partnership strategic board. It is this tasking function which meets regularly to identify hotspots and areas that need attention and how partnership resources can be used to tackle problems. As well as intelligence for partners, hotspots can be identified by community area forums, local councillors and by residents themselves. And as councillor Gibson has already referred to, the See It, Report It leaflet campaign, which has been used in areas of the borough to increase reporting of antisocial behaviour. We encourage our local communities and our local councillors to raise the issues and also to recognise the work that we are doing with the cross-section of our partners to tackle the issue. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Barclay. Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of observations. I think yourself and councillor Donaldson may be the only two members in this room that have actually wore a uniform in my day of work, in my time as being police officers. Any other member has, I apologise. I think I can say firsthand the reassurance it gives people to see a person in a uniform, regardless whether it's a warden's uniform, police officer's uniform. It's what people want to see. It's only natural. This relatively small amount of money, in my opinion, will be well spent. The wages for the wardens may not be a lot, and as I heard it mentioned, two meetings ago in here, certain certain wardens were being mocked. The bottom line is, whatever uniform you have, when you walk those streets as an element of society, will always abuse you, regardless of what uniform you have. And if those people have the metal to don a uniform and to go out and enforce our rules and regulations, they should be applauded. When I was down South Shields Town Centre a number of weeks ago, and I'll congratulate, the the bus terminal was fantastic. If it's a gay rate of South Shields, the first thing I noticed was a cig of chewing gum on the on the block paving. No enforcement, what education? Everything that's been mentioned tonight is not gonna solve those problems unless you've got men and women who are prepared to go out and do our duty. And that's all I really want to say on it. That's reassure the people of South Tyneside. It's a start. It's a relatively small amount of cash, but cash that will be well spent. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Foster. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First thing, Madam Mayor, I just take two little quick questions. The first thing, I've heard councillor Gibson talk about the Tory cuts again. Now, how can we finance these wardens? Wasn't there a wind turbine going to be put up at Middlefields, which would have paid for a lot of money for the electricity there and the new electric cars? But it was objected to by one person. That money that this cabura is now going to spend on that would pay for the wardens straight away. Without a shallow doubt, the money we would money we're going to spend there would have paid for these wardens. My second point was, I'm not talking about the wardens coming back. Just on Friday, I had a young lass on my estate at the top of my street, got off the net row and she's got a bloody good headache. An absolute disgrace what's happened. There were fifteen kids jumped on her. She's had to go to the R V I and she's had to have plastic surgery. Twelve years of age, plastic surgery. The police are involved and the police says they would phone her on Saturday. The police didn't phone. The police didn't get in touch with her at all. This child's mother had to get in touch with the police. And the police's response was, if we're doing phone here. And the police's response was, if we don't phone you within two weeks, email with to remain on. That's a twelve-year-old kid with plastic surgery on her face and her eye. Now, it's an absolute disgrace that the police won't do anything. And I'm not going to turn around and say that the wardens could have prevented that, but at least the wardens would have been known that that was a hotspot on the Burn Bridge, and we could have done something about it. We need these wardens back, without a shadow of a doubt, just to go and sit in the hotspots places with our cameras that can put everybody off. It would be absolutely fantastic to put this motion forward, and I would support it a hundred percent. But wouldn't it be nice, Madam May, if every resident round here could pick the phone up when they've got this sort of thing going on, which is violence towards their children or violence towards them? It would be great to pick them up and have a response, immediate response. If we couldn't have that, if we could have the police on speed dial, like Judd and Kilgawre does, that would solve it all. Thank you very much.
Excuse me councillor Roberts. As I stated at the beginning of the meeting, we would not be offence. Excuse me councillor Roberts, I'm speaking. We do not be offensive to our colleagues in this chamber. Excuse me councillor Roberts, I do not want to silence you, but I will if I have to. Yes, again. Well, listen to what I'm saying to you. We'll leave it there. Can I ask councillor Walsh, you wanted to speak? Thank you.
Thanks, Madam May. It was really just to follow on from the incidents that obviously happened in South Shields and across the borough, actually, because it was partly linked with the metal line as councillor Hamilton would be worried. Because obviously councillor Hamilton very kindly arranged the meeting on Friday that we had with businesses and the police. So it actually sort of went through the situation of what all those incidents were. But I think it's worthwhile, Madam May, just to update members in the room that obviously working together with the police and other partners. And the police have arrested two youths, they've followed further investigation, at least another eight of those youths. So that works actually ongoing at the moment, so it's certainly not been dealt with, Madam May. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Walsh. Councillor Kilgawre, you wanted to speak?
Yes, thanks, Madam May. I have a number of questions, but I have a colleague who I believe will be asking those questions and making those statements. But in response to councillor Roberts, I think this is a very, very serious and very important matter. You know, myself, my colleagues on Felgate and Headworth Ward, we used the wardens very often. We had a great relationship with them. Sadly, they weren't able, they weren't equipped, they didn't have the powers to respond in the way that we would have appreciated. But we did appreciate the work that they wanted to do, and the, you know, the energy and the effort and the passion, the compassion that they demonstrated to our members of our community. What I would say is that this amendment doesn't set out in any detail how this will be achieved, but I will leave that to my colleague to question. But I think it's very rightful that I respond to councillor Roberts' comment about me. And I am very well aware of that young lady who was attacked brutally, and it was absolutely despicable. And no one would, you know, suggest otherwise. But what I would say is that the very behaviour that is demonstrated here tonight by councillor Roberts, and quite often on Facebook, there's been a flurry of Facebook abuse this weekend.
Excuse me councillor Kilgawre, I'm sorry.
Madam May, if I may, if I may finish.
I think you've made your point with regards to councillor Roberts, and I think we'll leave it there. Do you have anything else to say about the debate?
I do, Madam May, yes, because that is quite clearly an element of antisocial behaviour. And I think as councillor Milburn quite rightly demonstrated, the various facets that are combined within antisocial behaviour, I think sadly we've witnessed that again this evening. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Kilgawre. Councillor Stonehouse?
Thank you, Madam May. Um, just a couple of points, I mean, most of my colleagues have mentioned it already. It is a terrible thing. Uh, the police will prioritise calls whereby if it's somebody being harassed, you know, um, they won't go to that, they'll go to injury, which is fair enough, I mean, we're all, you know, cutting my cloth here. All the, uh, the police are greatly reduced, you know, staff are greatly reduced, it's not fair. But at the same time, we still have to face our residents, you know? Um, long term, we have tourism that pays quite a lot of revenue in this town. Now, if we don't get this sorted out, by whichever means, people are not going to stop coming to a fantastic coastline everywhere else, you know, they're just gonna bypass this. We're gonna be sort of a black spot on the more or less a beautiful area. So we really need to have this sorted as soon as possible.
Thank you councillor Stonehouse. Does any other member wish to speak? Councillor Atkinson?
Excuse me. It's just very briefly, um, thank you. Um, it's just picking up exactly what councillor Stonehouse said. We're still some nine hundred, almost a thousand, police officers less than we were eleven, twelve years ago. You can shrug as much as you like, councillor Thompson, that is the case. And that's why, when you make those calls as a resident or as a councillor, sometimes it's so frustrating because you think they should be there. You know, they are hugely depleted, and it's because of the cuts of funding that they've also had, as we have had. Um, I would say we've got a police and crime commissioner who's very acutely aware of that, and the numbers are starting to build up again because we've got, you know, an injection more. I think that the realisation has been that that was not the right thing to do by the Conservative government, cutting the funds to the police service. So I think the numbers are building up, but it's like anything, you can't just start someone off and the next day they become effective as a police officer. So, however, what I would say is that the police and crime commissioner is keen to hear all items of antisocial behaviour, and tomorrow night, actually, I think she has an online presence, and is welcoming people to go online and share some of the stories. Um, I know that she hears us, well, me anyway, when I get in touch with her, and I'm sure we're working together. And I would think if we're accepting that perhaps diversionary tactics such as the excellent work that is done at Cleggwell and Hartleyburn, um, you know, some members are in the room who actually actively are involved with that committee. You know, if we're saying that perhaps we may want to be petitioning perhaps for more diversionary activities in the borough, rather than three, let's say, um, I don't, very, very brave community wardens who wouldn't be working twenty-four hours, who wouldn't be working, you know, when this antisocial behaviour is sometimes working, who would definitely be rapid response, because if they've got to go from Whitburn right through to the heaven, they're gonna have to be a rapid response. So I would just say that, let's be realistic, and let's say, let's find other ways. And working with the community safety partnership, but is there more we can do about youth engagement? Is there more the police and crime commissioner can do to help us with that? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Atkinson. Councillor Kilgawre, you said one of your colleagues wanted to speak? When you stood up?
Yes, Madam May, just in seconding the motion, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson, would you like to reply to the debate?
Thank you, Madam May. Uh, just in response to councillors Gibson and Barclay, fully appreciate the importance, intelligence, of the intelligence partnerships, public reporting. What do you actually do when you have a mountain of intelligence? You need boots on the ground, you need somebody who can react when it's happening, not three days later. So I fully appreciate where you're coming from with relationships and intelligence.
Madam May, can I just?
I.
Excuse me, let councillor Thompson finish, I need you to come in. Councillor Gibson?
I'd like to carry on. So, I appreciate that aspect, but you need a presence on the ground. A lot of our CCTV isn't active, that's not going to help. We all, I think, now understand the police's situation and thrive, which means low-level ASB is not going to be addressed at the time. We need somebody who can combat this at the time it's happening. And councillor Atkinson? You talk about being realistic. Rather than just blaming the police and ultimately the government, I would refer you to the Crime and Disorder Act, and that shows our authorities' responsibility in the area of ASB. Thank you, Madam May.
Thank you councillor Thompson, but I don't think that councillor Atkinson inferred that. Legislation requires that a named vote is taken on certain decisions relating to the setting of the budget. I will therefore ask the monitoring officer to record a vote as to whether the proposed amendment is agreed. Could I ask you to do that, please?
Thank you, Madam May. Good evening, members. I will read each of your names alphabetically, and I would ask that you please indicate clearly using the microphone as to whether you are for, against, or abstaining from the vote on the amendment. Councillor Moore? Councillor Atkinson? Councillor Bell? Councillor Barclay? Councillor Best? Councillor Brady? Councillor Dean? Councillor Dixon? Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Ellison? Councillor Flynn? Councillor Foreman? Councillor Foster? Councillor Francis? Councillor Gibson?
Right, first answer, yes.
Councillor Hamilton? Councillor He? Councillor Heddington? Councillor Huntley? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kilgawre? Councillor Lisk? Councillor Malcolm? Councillor N Maxwell? Councillor McHugh? Councillor Melling? Councillor Milburn? Councillor Peacock? Councillor Portouse? Councillor Potts? Councillor Punchin? Councillor Roberts? Councillor Smith? Councillor Stonehouse? Councillor Taylor? Councillor Thompson? Councillor Treder? Councillor A Walsh? Councillor N Walsh? Councillor Welsh? Councillor West? And councillor Wildhut?
I have to inform council? I have to inform council that the amendment is not agreed. There was thirty-four against and eight for. A change from the original motion put by councillor Bell. Do any other members wish to ask a question or speak on the original motion? Councillor Hamilton?
Yeah, I did have a long list of questions, but I'm not gonna go through that now because I don't think that would be appreciated. So instead, I'm just going to say, there are a few things that I would like to see published in relation to the budget. Um, I think we should publish the equality assessments. If there's a cumulative impact assessment, I think that should also be published. Um, and I'd like to see a bit of information on each of the individual service proposals published, and a consultation report, because we should have a report of all of the consultation that we carried out. And I believe that that should be published. One thing I am slightly concerned about, and I just wanted to raise this because I'm not sure if I'm right or wrong on this, I thought the budget had to have a statement of assurance in from the director of business and resources, and it doesn't. If it does, we need to include it, and just based on my day job, we always say that has to be included. So that is just a point, I might be wrong, it might just be something my local authority does, that I work for does. But just if we do, we need to make sure that we do include that. But I do think we need to publish some more of those documents that include the things about the consultation, and the impact, if that's possible, please.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Councillor Bell?
Thank you. And obviously councillor Hamilton, if you wish to send your questions through, I will make every effort to answer them. I do appreciate that if there is a long list, that we could do it that way. Um, I would have to take advice about the director of business resources, I'm not sure, because we haven't done that before, but I will check that out, and obviously the comments on the others have been noted. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bell. Does any other member wish to speak? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam May. Um, there's lots in this budget that I would celebrate. Um, just to pick a few selected highlights if you like. Investment in active travel corridors, the stronger shores scheme, uh, lower energy street lighting, increased litter bins and recycling bins, the flood and coastal risk management, ultra-low emissions project. There's loads of really good stuff in here that I commend the Labour Group for putting forward. I do have a couple of questions and concerns, whoops. Um, page four of the report says, our medium-term strategy will be published in the summer. Um, and then page seven says, spending should be allocated to our priorities. And of course, your budget expresses your priorities usually. So I'm confused about how the budget and the spending can be allocated to priorities when the medium-term strategy hasn't yet been published. Um, I was slightly surprised to see, um, one point five million set aside for South Shields Town Hall remodelling. Um, and I think that might raise a few eyebrows of residents when we know that residents are facing a cost of living crisis with, you know, inflation, fuel, energy, groceries all becoming more and more expensive. Um, so I'd like to get some clarity if possible about exactly what that money's being used for. Um, but in summary, really, just to put things in its proper context, and I've said similar things in previous years when we've had this equivalent meeting. You know, depending who you listen to and what year it is and how things are going, we've always had something like the fifth, sixth, seventh largest economy in the world. Um, but the amount of money that government allocates to local authorities has been cut and cut and cut. And we're expected to do more with less, year on year on year, for twelve years now. And it's our residents that pay the price of that. Local government faces a funding crisis, ongoing funding crisis, that I believe is damaging to our communities. Um, in order to continue providing services, we have to meet that shortfall somehow. And I know we heard mention about the council tax rise, but essentially for the residents, it's understandable that they feel massively frustrated at a time where the cost of living's increasing, that they're paying more and they feel like they're getting less. But I think it is important to put the blame for that where it belongs, and that is, in my opinion, firmly with the central government and with the current system of council tax. The current system of above-inflation tax hikes isn't sustainable, and we need an alternative model of local government funding. That's urgently needed. At the moment with council tax, we've got a system where some of the richest areas in the country pay some of the lowest levels of council tax, while some of the poorest have to pay the most. That simply can't be right, and I believe that's really harming our communities in South Tyneside. I think that needs to be said. Um, so although, as I say, I've got a couple of questions, I think it's a, you know, uh, an unenviable task to try and put together a budget at a time like this. And so, yeah, I celebrate the good things in there with just a couple of caveats. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Francis. Before I ask the leader to close the debate, I'm going to ask councillor Bell to sit down.
Thank you councillor Francis for that. I mean, obviously, I don't have all of the information for the remote living of South Shields Town Hall, and I will get that to you. Um, and yes, you're right about the council tax, but also about the business rates. We can maintain and keep some of our business rates. However, we can't compete with the likes of Chelsea, Knightsbridge, Kensington, anything along those lines. It doesn't go anywhere near what we do need, so I do appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bell. I'm now going to ask councillor Dixon to formally close this report, please.
Thank you, Madam May. This financial plan sets out, of course, on how we are investing in the community and how we are focusing resources upon the areas most important to our residents. This year's budget is presented against a backdrop of the council's five community priorities. Supporting our young people in need, supporting families and older or vulnerable people, create the conditions for economic recovery and investment, support town centres, villages and hospitality, and invest in our natural built environment. This is reflected in the budget we are discussing tonight and means. More funding for roads and footpaths. More funding for regeneration to support new businesses and jobs. More funding for youth provision, playgrounds and leisure facilities. More funding for innovative sustainability projects to help reduce. More funding for innovative sustainability projects to help reduce carbon emissions. More funding for affordable homes. More funding for litter bins and recycling points. More funding to support vulnerable adults and children. Funding available to CAFs was increased in twenty twenty one, twenty two to help meet local community priorities. This increase will be sustained in twenty twenty two, twenty three. Our funding for street cleaning was increased in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And this was all sought to be sustained in twenty twenty two, twenty three. We have had to adapt over the last two years due to COVID. For example, due to COVID restrictions, we invested more monies into community-based events over the summer in our wonderful parks across the borough. This was very well received and will continue to do the same in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three with a programme which is even bigger and better. We listen and respond and we'll continue to engage and consult with our residents and partners to help shape our planning going forward. Balancing a budget is never easy. Madam Mayor, I'd like to place on record our thanks to Councillor Bell and the Cabinet for the work they've actually done over the last twelve months. The challenges we face in a very uncertain world means we always have to be prudent and diligent in how we manage our finances. However, this still allows us to bag up our plans and projects with as necessary resources as required. And I commend the twenty twenty two, twenty seven medium term financial plan for approval, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dixon. Legislation requires that a named vote is taken on certain decisions relating to the setting of the budget. I will therefore ask the monitoring officer to record a named vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Elected members, I will read each of your name alphabetically and I would ask that you please indicate clearly using the microphone as to whether you are for, against, or abstaining from the vote on the original motion. Councillor Moore? Councillor Atkinson? Councillor Bell? Councillor Barclay?
Four.
Councillor Best? Councillor Brady? Councillor Dean? Councillor Dixon? Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Ellison? Councillor Flynn? Councillor Foreman? Councillor Forster? Councillor Francis? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Hamilton? Councillor Hay? Councillor Hetherton? Councillor Huntley? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kilgare? Councillor Lisk? Councillor Malcolm? Councillor Maxwell? Councillor McHugh? Councillor Melling? Councillor Milburn? Councillor Peacock? Councillor Porthouse? Councillor Potts? Councillor Punchin? Councillor Roberts? Councillor Smith? Councillor Stonehouse? Councillor Taylor? Councillor Thompson? Councillor Traynor? Councillor A Walsh? Councillor M Walsh? Councillor Welsh? Councillor West? And Councillor Wildhut?
So the motion is agreed. Five against, five for. Five for against, two for abstentions. Colleagues, I can announce that the motion is agreed. Thirty five votes for, five against and two abstentions. Item seven on the agenda, the next item of business is to consider a report of the Director and Business of Resources on the capital strategy twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven. I will ask Councillor Bell to formally move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council is planning to invest over three hundred and fifty million pound through its capital programme over the next five years. It is important that this investment aligns with key objectives around regeneration, carbon reduction, housing, transport, community facilities and so on. And that the funding makes a real difference to residents and communities within our borough. Supporting our medium term financial plan, this capital strategy which complies with statutory regulations sets out a framework for strategic decision making in long term planning, delivery and monitoring of our capital investment programme. These plans include identification of resources such as ass- accessing external funding where possible through national and regional opportunities to minimise the draw upon the council's own resources. It also details the governance arrangements around our capital investment plans, ensuring that resources are used effectively, sustainably, and that spending is maintained within affordable limits. Council is therefore asked to approve the capital strategy appended to the main body of the report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Bell. Is that seconded?
It's seconded, Madam. Yes, it's seconded, Madam Mayor, and I reserve the right to speak as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um as you may be aware, um local government workers did not receive the pay rise for um the year to twenty twenty one. Uh there was a an offer made by the local uh the LGA which various different unions rejected and there was ballots for strike action. I believe all of those outstanding ballots, bar some small ones within J and B, had now been resolved. And that the the pay award will be made um or agreed in coming days at the amount the LGA offered. There is a slight concern about when this is paid. As you're all away, the government will be bringing in an increase in national insurance payments from April this year. If those staff get their backdated payments in their April pay, they will be charged the increased rate of national insurance on that whole year's worth of backdated pay. So what I would like to seek from the from the from Councillor Bell is some reassurances that we will do absolutely everything we can to ensure that if everything is resolved, um we we get it through, if it's at all possible, on the March payroll so that it costs the council no more, but that the staff won't be penalised with that higher rate of national insurance. And I'm sure all our staff would appreciate if we could do that, particularly those on the lowest salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hamilton. Councillor Bell, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councillor Hamilton. I can say here and now that we do expect the pay rises to be paid in March. Therefore, we should not be hating our staff with the rises in the national insurance, but we do expect it to be paid in March.
Thank you, Councillor Bell. That is good news.
Thank you.
Councillor Walsh, would you like to speak now?
No, I don't wish to speak on it, uh, Madam Mayor.
Is the report agreed? Thank you. We now move on to item eight. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Director and Business Resources on the Treasury Management Strategy twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. I will ask Councillor Bell to formally move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The report is prepared to comply with local government legislation, Chanted Institute of Public Finance, the SIF codes of practice, and guidance from the Department for Leveling Up Housing and Communities. It outlines the council's treasury management strategy for twenty twenty two, twenty three in two main areas. Part one concerns the South Tyneside Consolidated Loans Fund and covers the council's borrowing and prudential and treasury indicators. The indicators have been used to set the framework within which the treasury management strategy has been developed. Part two concerns the investment strategy that governs the investment of the council's cash balances. The strategy has been compiled alongside the council's budget. It is based on interest rate forecasts available at the time of writing and outlines factors that may affect decision making in twenty twenty two, twenty three. Council is therefore recommended to approve the treasury management strategy for twenty twenty two, twenty three as set out in the papers. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Bell. Is that seconded?
It's seconded, Madam.
Thank you, Councillor Walsh. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the report agreed? The report is agreed, thank you. We now move on to item nine. The next business is to receive questions under procedure rule eight. Two questions have been received under this rule. The first question is from a Mister Andrew Guy. As and the question is as follows. Does South Tyneside Council currently co- collect data on the lo- on the occasion of antisocial behaviour reports it receives directly from residents to identify hotspots within whi- which wards and which areas and in in turn identify which areas was most benefit from interve- intervention measures such as CCTV and improving lighting? If South Tyneside Council does collect such data, does it track the effectiveness of the intervention methods used? Mister Guy will receive a written response to his question within seven days of this meeting. The question and the answer provided will be added to the questions book, open for public inspection. The second question is from Miss Nicola G- Glynn and it reads as follows. When do you plan to introduce kitchen waste fo- food collection for all domestic and business premises? Miss Glynn will receive a written response to her question within seven days of this meeting. The question and the answer provided will be added to the questions book, open for public inspection. We now move on to item ten. The next item of business is to deal with petitions received under council procedure rule nine. One petition has been received under this rule. As per the council's procedure rules, we will not debate the petition petition today. After the petition has been presented in accordance with the process set out in the constitution, I will move that the petition be referred to the appropriate body. Petition one requests South Tyneside Council to declare an ecological emergency. The petition has a hundred and eighty two signatories in total, with seventy eight of those signatories living within the borough. In accordance with the council's procedure rule nine, the petition stands referred to the head of en- environment as the appropriate officer for further consideration. May I also advise that no other petitions were submitted to our January meeting of the Borough Council and therefore there are no updates or actions to report back to the council today. Item ten on your agenda. The next business is to receive motions under procedure rule ten. Three motions ought to be considered un- under this rule today. I will explain the procedure for motions. I will ask the proposer of each motion to move the motion. He or she may speak up to five minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The seconder must speak up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be open to debate by members who may wish to speak for up to three minutes or may move amendments. Motion one has been submitted by Councillors Wildhut, Forster, Thompson, Kennedy and Milburn. Councillor Wildhut, please present motion to full council. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh my motion's about uh idling vehicles. That's um vehicles with uh the engines running while stationary. Uh engaging in the RAC school clean air zone and adding informational vehicle idling signage at the tile sheds level crossing, Eastboulder Metro Station crossing and the Benton Road crossing, encouraging drivers to switch off engines while stationary to reduce emissions. The council notes that RAC research found that twenty six percent of those caught idling are doing so outside schools. Vehicle engines idling whilst waiting can produce up to twice the emissions of a car in motion, churning out sulphur dioxide, particulate matter and nitrogen oxide. An idling engine can average uh t- on on average fill one hundred and fifty balloons with emissions each minute. The Royal College of Physicians estimate forty thousand deaths a year in the UK are linked to air pollution, with engine idling contributing to this. Stationary idling is thought to contribute to asthma, heart disease and lung cancer. Stationary idling is an offence under section forty two of the Road Traffic Act nineteen eighty eight. The council resolves number one, engaging in the RAC school clean air zone campaign where the RAC provides signage for school locations that encourages drivers to turn off their engines. Two, to place signage at the tile sheds level crossing, Eastboulder Metro Station crossing and the Benton Road crossing, encouraging drivers to switch off engines while stationary to reduce emissions. Three, to consider further and future signage at locations near to schools or buildings housing vulnerable and eld- or elderly people when standing traffic and emissions become a regular and or a long term problem. Four, to utilise the South Tyneside Council's media platforms to share information on the health environmental damage caused by vehicle emissions and to publicise the reasons behind the action by giving the story to local newspapers. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Wildhut. Is the motion seconded? Councillor Forster?
I second the motion, Madam Mayor, who serves the right to speak here.
Thank you. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question? Speak or move an amendment.
Madam Mayor?
Councillor Gibson?
I'd like to move an amendment.
Councillor Gibson?
Well, Madam, I would like to move an amendment about motion one received today um about idling, which you can see it's all placed on your seats. And I would like to change the motion. And because what's happened within the borough, the air quality has increased, uh has gotten much better. We have two air quality machines which are Bolton Lane in South Shields and Lindisfarne round about Leam Lane. And the nitrogen has fell drastically, so it meets air quality and defra. So we have a fantastic air quality in the borough, but it doesn't stop there. We're still gonna have to monitor it. So I would like to move the amendment motion set out in red. Thank you.
Uh as point of order, I don't actually understand the amendment.
It perhaps would be easier, Councillor Gibson, if you read the amendment down.
I'll read the motion out, yeah. We've got item one, we've crossed that out. The council would not be able to consider such signage on the highway network. As signage on the highway network needs to be prescribed by department and transport signs of which any vehicle idling does not form part of. The council is also under a decluttering exercise on our streets, especially with conversation areas. So so much signage would increase street clutter. Instead of the council, we'll still work with Network Rail and all rail providers on collective communication campaign to highlight the issues associated with vehicle idling and will make use And we'll make use of the existing communication process, including the website and social media. Paragraph two is. Previous performance, the council will consider signage due to concerns with in-increase in street clutter. Illegal such as highway signage. Air quality on item three, air quality, the council undertakes a robust programme of air quality monitor across the borough. Via continual monitoring stations, diffused tubes to measure the concentration of air quality pollution, nitro dioxide. And particle matter. The monitor information is reported to DEFRA through the annual strutters report. The council confirmed recording data has indicated that there is no exceeding of air quality objectives for. Nitrogen dioxide, particle and matter. However, even though our monitor data is not at the highest po-point of pollution. Of level objections have been exceeded, the council recognises the importance of education in drivers. Negative environment effects of vehicle idling. The council will ensure the communication programme regarding the importance of vehicle idling. Will be completed using the council's website, according to media platform and highlighting the important issues with rail providers. And education establishments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Stonehouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I absolutely share the concerns that seem to be behind the motion to council. Um as the motion says, according to the Royal College of Physicians. About forty thousand deaths in Britain each year are linked to air pollution. Um evidence from the World Health Organisation shows that air pollution is particularly dangerous to the health. To the very young and very old, as well as people who are already living with long term health conditions like asthma. Although I support the intention of this motion. I do worry that it's at the risk of tackling the symptom rather than the cause of the issue. Uh where I live, parents use their cars idling outside of residence bungalows, which I've already mentioned before. Who suffer with chronic um obstructive pulmonary disease, asthma, heart and other lung conditions. We also know that the idling of cars is not only against the law. It's completely unnecessary. There's no need for it at all. Transport makes up nearly a quarter of all greenhouse gas emissions. Two thirds of this comes from private vehicles and most core journeys in the UK are under two miles. For many people, this probably includes a school run. For some people, this isn't possible, obviously, where children or parents have mobility issues. Under their additional needs, but for many, it would be a fairly simple way just to reduce the impact of air pollution. In schools where students of uh thirty and upwards. Does the parent have to collect them from school when at weekends they go on public transport to Newcastle and Sunderland? It seems a bit ridiculous. Speaking at the London's Assembly Environment Committee last week, Dr Ian Woodway. Said, one of the things that I would strongly advocate against is driving your children to school. Miss uh Dr Mudwey pointed out that exposures to pollutants in your vehicle. And in many cases, higher than if you were walking alongside the road. He also called for air pollution mitigation. To become part of schools safeguarding commitment assessed by Ofsted. And he called for local authorities to avoid building affordable housing aimed at families in known pollution hotspots. I believe that in addition to raising awareness around idling, we should be encouraged as many people as possible. To explore other ways of getting their children to and from school. South Tyneside Council has already done some excellent work on this with the Give Yourself a Lift video. The video opens by saying core dependency for the school run is causing gridlock. Dangerous levels of pollution and poor health amongst the young people. Now, it might be that, you know, we've got a machine to say we've got excellent air quality. But really, we can improve the air quality again by just not needing machines, just common sense.
Thank you, councillor Stonehouse. Does any other member wish to speak? Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you. Um because I'm still confused about the amendment, I'd like to propose an alternative amendment, which I think will cover. What councillor Gibson was trying to put forward, because I think leaving the bit in about we won't put signs up. Would be confusing to somebody just reading the motion. So I would like to suggest that we we start with the council notes. Vehicle engines idling can produce up to twice the mi-emissions of a car in motion. An idling car can on average fill a hundred and fifty balloons with emissions each minute. Stationary idling is already.
Councillor Hamilton, can I'm sorry to stop you just there.
Sorry.
But I've just been informed that the amendment to the the motion, the original motion needs to be seconded. Before we can hear another amendment, because then that has to be debated.
Right, okay.
So if you could just pause just there, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a secondaire to the amendment? Thank you, councillor Atkinson. So now we have to deal with the amendment to the original motion. Does anybody else wish to speak on this amendment? Councillor Huntley?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um I think we're all in agreement here that. Idling of any cars that may cause any damage to any children's health is absolutely unforgivable. I think what we've got to accept though is that unfortunately people will drive their cars. And some of them are not very good polluters for the world. Um and I think what we need to be uh mindful of is the information that was in the original motion was actually taken from data in twenty nineteen. Um I've just quickly checked it just to make sure I was right. It was was published in November twenty nineteen, so the data was probably collected twenty eighteen to early twenty nineteen. And a lot of cars now have got auto stops on them, so if it's a new car, it'll automatically stop. If you're not moving, which is great for the environment, I have to say, and great for children. But I have to support the motion that um councillor Gibson's brought forward, because it's absolutely correct that we should be making these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Huntley. Is the amendment agreed? The amendment is carried, therefore the substantive motion is no longer the original motion, as instead is the amended motion. Do any members wish to ask questions or speak or move another amendment? Thank you, councillor Hamilton.
Right, thank you. For the purposes of clarity, I think when it's published on the website, an amendment to that original amendment. Would just be to take out the reasons about not putting signage on the highway. Because I don't think that would make sense to somebody just reading the motion, because the when it's published. In the next minute, it won't have the original one, so nobody will know that signage was asked for. So I think it's just to make it clearer for people reading it. That we are saying, I'm agreeing with all the things you're saying about working with Network Rail. I thought you'd just put in the bit about not considering the signage for information for us. So it was about taking that out just to make it easier for people to understand on the website. I hope you'll accept that as a friendly um gesture and amendment.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton. Councillor Foster?
Thank you, uh Madam Mayor. Uh although I haven't been in the chamber for many months, uh when this motion was put forward, I pretty much anticipated what was gonna happen. As a matter of protocol though, um this amendment only came to light, I believe, at four o'clock this afternoon. So I don't doubt for once, setting the words of councillor Gibson, who are no trust and everything I've been to, everything he said. A lot of the times I do agree with him. However, you can drive around South Tyneside at any town and se-and see various signs. And if at that time could have researched, because I'm almost sure that similar signs are in other parts of the country. Advising motorists to do exactly what councillor Wildherd's motion wanted us to do. But unfortunately, because of the time, we didn't have an opportunity to research it. And the last thing I would want to come into this chamber is to give something that is basically wrong. So I would like to some, I'd like to know why it was late and if it was late or if that's the protocol and it's within the, it's in the rules. Well, we just have to accept that, but ideally, it would have been nice to have a little bit more time to research the amendment that's now been passed. The other observation I'd like to make is is the decluttering exercise. And to be honest, that will be good news for residents, because in the past, I have emailed the council about decluttering. Various signs in around Cleedley Spalding and it's always met with a negative result. So I'll take this amendment to the council tomorrow and I'll rewrite me emails and ask them to declutter the signs that I asked to do last year. But my main point of standing here is now, it's as simple, straightforward. As we all agree, the last thing I wanted to do was to poison my children, old people, whatever. It was a simple, straightforward motion to assist, not stop, but to assist in stop people and idling in the vehicles. So in conclusion, Madam Mayor, if you could give us some advice about the the timing of the amendment. And if that's within the rules, I accept that. But if it isn't, I'd really like to go away and research to see what signs in other parts of the country than may or may not be. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor For. Just one more. No advice on that question? Right, I've just been advi-advised councillor Foster, that there isn't no time limit on amendments. As you've just heard, councillor Hamilton has also proposed an amendment. So there's no time limit on that. The only time that there's a limit on amendments are to the budget. Which this meeting is about.
Madam Mayor, can I ask if we go away tonight and do some research and identical signs are occurring in other parts of the country? Would stipulate to you that the Department of Transport can't do them signs? Can we bring it back?
Yes, most certainly. No problem at all, councillor Foster.
Madam Mayor, um.
I just sorry councillor Gibson, but there people want to speak. Is it point of information councillor Gibson?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, what I was going to say was, um the officers at Vice in South Tyneside, you know, who have decluttering. And education was the best policy, as we'll have excellent air quality, we'll maintain that. But the education of idling will continue and educate people. But also, you know, sustainable South Tyneside, people are using alternative modes of transport at this time. But also people have electric cars, they're changing fuel, there's different fuel additives, so that has reduced things massively. That's all I wanted to say, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson, councillor Thompson, then councillor Atkinson. Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
I don't need to speak now, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Atkinson. Sorry.
Uh i-yes, it it's a bit of a bit of clarification. Um I I just think more homework should have been done to put the motion in. I did just a quick search, um I'm I'm already in in talks with Network Rail with regards to the crossings. Um within actually the ward um uh that was mentioned. And um you know, the barrier time is quite long at times. Um Network Rail have sent me uh an image of something that we're already working them with. That to use um to use posters near or on the um Network Rail's premises. And you've got to use their logo, but that's got to be done in conjunction with them, so that's something that they've um provided me with, which may be. Something we can take forward. I do agree, um Madam Mayor, that um we do want to encourage active travel. And that includes walking, that includes cycling, that includes um public transport. Um and most of our schools, if not all of them, have walking to school initiatives. They do that regularly. A lot of us in this um chamber are are school governors and we'll know all about that. Uh parents and 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 carers are reminded about that as an initiative. Um I I do, I will also just um uh finish on, you know. We're we're thinking about here trying to dumb down the use of the car, aren't we, to reduce our emissions? So what I would say is that we've just had a convoy um of DVSA regarding the DVSA relocation. From Jarrow to Sunderland, which will mean actually that our driving instructors, our learners, our would be learners. Are gonna have to go to Sunderland to do their driving tests. Now, I'm just wondering. Our both MPs are campaigning against this move and I'm just wondering. Because the um the Department um of dri-Driver and Vehicle Standards Authority is a government department. I'm wondering if perhaps the Conservatives would actually contact um the department and ask if they could help as well in not re-relocating that. I'm sure um our driving community would completely um back that. I think, and and just using what that means is, if you are at Heaven Glen Street and you're going. To the 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 current um s-um s-location in in Jarrow. Um i-it takes, it's three miles, it takes you ten minutes. If you're going from um from here, uh Beacon and Bents, roughly the same, about three miles and approximately ten minutes. Once you start adding that you're going to Sunderland, you can more than double the journey time. And you can more than double the duration that it's gonna take you. Now, that's all emissions. So there's more than just, you know, vehicle idling, absolutely definitely against it and lots of modern cars, as being said. Doesn't have uh vehicle idling happening, but there are many other ways and I think active travel. The Moore Lane travel uh system, which I'm hoping it will be passed through Cleedley and Eastborden to get active travel. Schools doing more, us all doing more as a community and as a council. But um that's why I vote for the amendment, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Atkinson. Councillor Wildherd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um there's been much said about uh um monit-monitoring of emissions in South Tyneside. Uh but I would like clarification on where the monitoring has been done. Was it done outside of schools or was it done? Uh at railway crossings? Uh do we know what the uh emissions are at those particular sites? That wasn't made clear by councillor Gibson uh when he um uh gave his statement on emissions. Um I I also um I found out today that this, that that the councillors initiated a consultation. Uh based on my subject matter, actually, uh and um the council are gonna have a consultation. About idling engines, so if it's not a problem, why is the council going to have a consultation on it? It's uh seems to baffle me, um considering that um, you know, they 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 seem quite reluctant to. Do very much about it. And as councillor Foster said, um basically, uh. You know, why can't South Tyneside put up signs to recommend? Uh we're not trying to force anybody, but recommend to people, make them aware to to turn off their engines at at these particular uh hotspots. Um when when lots of other um councils have done so uh in the country. So why can't South Tyneside do it? And I know that I I know that councillor Atkinson has been in touch with Network Rail and. Uh she showed a sign uh that uh that Network Rail uh proposes to s-to show, which uh. Uh I I would uh welcome uh greatly, but um I I still can't understand why you're having a consultation on um. Emissions and and idling engines when um uh they seem to be against it. And going uh going on the subject also of um. Modern cars uh having s-uh stop-start buttons on them. Uh that is true, but uh that's only over the last two or three years. Prior to that, when when stop-start came out, uh you you were able to actually turn it off, so. So they turned it off and of course um uh o-older cars can't turn it off at all. So uh and the talk about electric cars, well, electric cars are still in the uh. Yeah, there there are not many, so many of them on the uh road as to make much of a difference at the moment, so. Uh you know, stopping idling is, in my view, still very important. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wildherd. We still need to look at councillor Hamilton's amended motion. Does anybody agree to the amendment to the amended motion placed by councillor Hamilton? It needs to be seconded, councillor Hamilton. Does anybody second the amendment to the amended motion by councillor Hamilton? No, colleagues? Okay, we go back to the original. No, colleagues? Okay, we go back to the original amended motion. Is that seconded? And it's already been, sorry, it's already been seconded, I'm getting confused here. Doesn't take much. Right, right. There was no dissenting voice. So the amendment, the original amendment to the motion is agreed. Thank you, colleagues. Motion three has been, sorry, have I missed two? Sorry. Motion two, two, has been submitted by councillors Thompson, Kennedy, Wildhurt, Foster and Melbourne. Councillor Thompson, please present the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. South Tyneside Council is a com- is committed to the principles of honest, open, account and accountable government and encourages community participation in the business of council. Establishing a public question time is a means by which the public can seek verbal responses at the time of asking from South Tyneside Council about issues affecting local government that are of a concern to them. Establishing a public question time assists the public to be better informed about governing of the South Tyneside, of South Tyneside, of South Tyneside Council and it provides the South Tyneside coun- South Tyne- I can't get it out. South Tyneside Council with a mechanism to identify issues of importance in their community. Very simply, not enough people take an interest in local government. How processes work, what the council is doing and why, and if it's what they want us to do. We need to improve this situation in every reasonable, practicable way that we can. We need to develop engagement with the public and to encourage interest and involvement. We need to show that we are an actively open, transparent and accountable authority. Pr- presently, we see a voter turnout of barely over a third of the electors. We see the public gallery at council meetings often close to empty. Something's wrong and this motion today will in a small way address this by showing the public that they can be heard and more importantly, be replied to at the same time they offer a question. How many people say their responses to a written question by checking the agenda at the next relevant meeting? Not enough, I'm sure. This proposal today may not fill the public gallery at next full council, but it might in some way increase interest and encourage engagement. I hope members can vote for this motion today. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Is the motion seconded? Thank you, councillor Melbourne. Putting words into my mouth, councillor Melbourne. I was just going to say, do you want to speak now or reserve the right to speak? The motion is now open to be, to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question? Speak or move an amendment. Councillor Francis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, much as I'd wish to not extend the length of meetings like this one, um, I do think this is an important point in terms of public engagement and, you know, being seen to be accountable and open. And I know this already happens in a number of other local authorities and it does seem to encourage those greater levels of public engagement with local democracy. I think we're, we're ultimately accountable to the residents, they're the people that elected us and they're the people that we're meant to be here to represent. And this proposed change seems fully in line with that responsibility. If questions are received with notice, which I see is embedded into the motion, this proposed change, you know, doesn't seem to cause any problem to me and I can't see a reason why a verbal response couldn't be prepared and heard alongside the questions. So I would urge people to vote for this motion.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whilst the council does not have a specific public question time, members of the public can already submit written questions to ordinary meetings of the council, given the appropriate notice under Councill procedure rule eight point three. Madam Mayor, you've already, um, highlighted two questions that's already been received by members of the public today and you've also set out the procedure for response, Madam Mayor. Can I just say, colleagues, I personally feel it is sensible for the matter to be referred to the Constitution Committee as the appropriate body for due consideration as per Councill procedure rule twelve point six point one, point one, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Councillor Thompson, do you wish to reply to the debate? I'm sorry, councillor Hamilton, I didn't see you.
Sorry, um, I didn't intend to come in on this, but I, I just feel I, it is necessary. Somebody reading out a question is not the same as somebody putting the question themselves. I looked at every other local authority in the area and every local authority in the area does have the opportunity to, for the public to ask questions. And they're given three minutes to speak, not just to read out the question, so they can give a little bit of background into the question and the reason why they're asking the question. In most local authorities, once they get the response, they're even allowed to put forward a supplementary question. Um, so I think, you, you know, South Tyneside is kind of out of step with normal practice on this. The fact that we don't allow members of the public to speak. In one local authority, if a petition has over a certain number of signatures, it automatically triggers a debate in the council chamber. We don't have that option neither. I really genuinely think the public need the opportunity to be involved, not by somebody reading out a question for them that doesn't give it the same impetus, passion as the person asking the question themselves. When a question is just read deadpan, it doesn't actually bring it to life, it doesn't give the, the mean, the full meaning of the question in the same way as somebody who is passionate about the subject gives that, the, a question the full meaning. I think it's very important that we involve the public in our meetings. I think it's very important that we're more open and democratic. Um, I understand that the, I'm, I'm assuming that councillor Dixon's suggestion of moving it to Constitutional Committee was an amendment, I'm not sure. Um, but if it was, then I guess that would be the way forward, but personally, I think it's just something we need to do now. Allow the public to come in, to get involved more and move it the twenty-first century.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton. Councillor Kilgallen?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure that we need to take some legal advice on it as to whether it is an amendment or, or it isn't. But I would like to support councillor Dixon in, in, in her, um, comments. I think as elected members, we are accountable, um, directly to the, the members of our community, whether they elected us or not. Um, I think, um, we do need to take this back to Constitution Committee, of which, um, councillor Thompson is a member. I think we need a framework, we need to look at that framework, which will allow us, if we so wish, to, to go along these lines. But I would say, a- as we do, we, we haven't had, um, our local, you know, kind of constituency kind of ward meetings during the pandemic. That has not prevented our community from, from contacting us. And I don't think, I, I, I'm not saying that I'm not for this. What I'm saying is I think there's gotta be other ways in which we can facilitate a much quicker route to getting the answers back for our community. Why wait until a borough council meeting to get a response that, that might be particularly relevant at that moment in time? We should be, you know, available to our communities as mu-